How are you? Getting it?
This one?
Yep. That's why I'm glad it's going to sign up. All right, all right. Just want people to know what you're talking about.
Do you want me to share the screen? Oh, not yet.
Thanks for the new bridge. How are you guys doing there?
We're...
You're good to go, Marina?
We're recording. We're good to go. Uh, we have Zoom. And we have live transmit going, so...
All set?
Yep. It's go.
All to order. I make a motion to open the meeting. Is there a second? One second.
Okay.
Roll call vote.
I mean, done this in person so long, it's so nice to see everybody.
Wow, people.
Now let me see if I remember your names. Trustee Stetzer?
Aye.
Trustee Keating?
Aye.
Trustee Lightgift?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes.
Lily was going to join on Zoom.
I'm looking for her right now. I see her. And I'm going to...
Promote her.
Understand she cannot vote because she's not here. She can ask questions.
I promoted her panelists. Great. So Lily, if you can hear us, you can share your screen. You can at least be seen.
Okay. Um, I'm asking any of the board members tonight if there is a conflict of interest or anything to disclose regarding this agenda. I have nothing to disclose.
Nothing to disclose. Nothing to disclose.
Nothing to disclose here. Rothia, did you want to talk a little bit about the meeting tonight and the dialogue?
Sure. Okay.
I'll start my video.
This meeting is to listen to a presentation from Mr. Chris DiMarzo of Mark IV regarding a new project. He is proposing for 75 Monroe. This presentation will be directed to all board members and any questions will be directed from board members to Mr. DiMarzo and his team. The public has been invited to view the meeting this evening and will not be invited to speak. Another meeting has been scheduled for July 15th, when the public will be able to view the plans. Thank you. And ask questions at that time. The location for this meeting will be announced as soon as possible. We're working on that and hope to have that posted next week. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, could everybody please silence their cell phones? Just a reminder. Okay, I'll come to it. Um, I really want to thank our staff this evening for pulling this together. Um, as some of you may know, Mayor Plummer left the call instructions for the municipalities not even a week ago to hold meetings in person. And so we are in compliance with that. We want to be. We're excited to have the hotel open again and have everyone here attending. But, you know, we may have a few glitches. So we're trying to set up our little video system and welcome to everybody who's also viewing remotely. We do have one very quick item this evening. The information has already been sent out to the trustees and also has been posted online. It is simply, um, a, uh, a vote for the Cabota RCB 1100 purchase contract. This is only a change of vendor on this contract. There is no actual significant change of dollar amount at all. Okay, thank you very much, Ruthia. Top of the top of the contract in front of you. And this, this, uh, fund, the funding has already been approved. So this is just simply the approval of this contract with a different vendor. Zach Lyer is here, Superintendent of BPW. If there's any specific questions anyone has, but... I'll give you one minute.
No additional, no, um, additional cost to the village from our original budget.
I just want to clarify that, um, it is not through, uh, different vendor. It is the same vendor off of a different contract.
Sorry, different contract.
The New York State contract, um, this is a original contract that has expired. So it's been, um, transferred over to a source one contract, which is a piggyback off the price was $41.70 more of the source one contract, but, uh, end market vendor. It's going to, uh, so it will stay the same cost for the village. It's just a little different.
And the, the contract as I understand that was run by the state. Through the state government. Through the government, okay. Yeah, yeah. I make a motion to approve the contact. Contract is amended before this evening. Is there a second? All vote?
Trustee Stetzer?
Stetzer, aye.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Trustee Lightgift?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Eric. Thanks, Ruthia. Appreciate it. Okay. Next up, uh, we have Mr. DiMarzo and his team here for, uh, stuff idea on 75 Monroe. As we welcome you this evening and glad to have us discuss it.
Yeah, we're getting a little sound issues from Zoom. So if you can turn up your audio so at least they can hear the audio.
Is the speaker with a microphone? I'm sorry. Yeah. Do you need the microphone, Eric?
My...
Okay.
Recording.
Usually I have one microphone on.
Yeah. Okay, nevermind.
It was totally far away, so...
Can the...
Hello?
How can we confirm that the people online can hear us? They should be able to, though.
Their hearing is just a little muffled and it might be even the person. But, uh... Okay. Live transmit is going as well, so...
We have a voice from the field.
Okay. So we're doing, we're doing as good as we can.
Yeah. You know, thanks, thanks, everybody, for bearing with us because, you know, faces are...
We do have reservations.
Sorry, guys.
Appreciate you for having us.
Yeah.
Rothia, I mean, I'll just tell you when to click.
I'm actually transferred over there. I can get out of this.
So you have Marina.
Marina's your assistant tonight.
Thank you so much for sending this up. Honestly, uh, it's been a while and, uh, I know it wasn't easy, but we, you and I have discussed, we're here to make a fresh start. We're talking about 75 Monroe Avenue. My name is Chris DiMarzo. I'm the owner of, uh, the site and president of Mark IV Enterprises. Uh, I have the, uh, our in-house company, Chris Manler, and our, uh, engineer, Kivars, and I'll put you two guys next to me. You know, beginning of the year...
That's all. I'm sorry.
Sure. Beginning of the year, I, we wanted to have a fresh start and I wanted to come up with a new design. And it starts with the architect. So we, I, we've been doing business with the CJS, uh, that's their company. Um, they worked on a number of multifamily developments for us. Uh, and I said, you know, these guys are really probably perfect for this scenario. Uh, and especially Derek. As you can see, Derek is, uh, not only in Pittsburgh, but, uh, he is the, uh, chairperson of the Pittsburgh Historic Board.
The designer of the Bureau Historic.
Yes.
Yeah. And, 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 uh, but I enjoy the village almost daily.
Glad to hear that.
Craig, uh, not only was on the preservation board of the city Rochester, but also was a transit, uh, trustee landlord society of, uh, Western New York. So they have not only new construction experience, but extensive experience with historic preservation. So they're really, maybe you guys just want a little bit, just to, um, say, uh, some experience.
So the firm was founded in 1972. Um, I became pregnant in 2006. Uh, Craig has been around for a lot longer. So, so we are having, have a good mix of historic preservation. And here are some examples of natural, we're doing the Buffalo Central Terminal. We restored and modified postically to make the space like a boarding home. And just finished perfectly right restoration. It took me 20 years so far to restore everything. Like, I find things like, okay, let's do another room. So, um, this is almost like always happened in my life in this building. So I think, you know, historic fabric and texture and like Chris was saying, we also go with a new construction. So I think understanding of the fabric we, that's surrounding the site, but also understanding new construction. And I think our, so it's adding a lot value to the village and to its users.
The rest of the work we've done with, um, all the original building, you know, that project, uh, is a, is a downtown project with the growth place. We've done all the kind of townhouse work down there. We are doing the strong neighborhood, the neighborhood around the Strong Village right now. We're doing a couple of, uh, wires from, yeah, which is another kind of, it really cares about what they build. They, they really do have, um, make sure that developments are appropriate. And so we're doing several projects. We did, yes, we're saying on some park for 625.
Yes. Yes, sort of development and I think that we're also working on master planning. It's a 93 acre site, also industrial and just, um, I think it's solely moving forward. But it's 30, 20 year project, so. So I think that's all, well, we're coming from. So I think with this, we'll probably hand it back to Chris.
So can we pass this to the board?
Oh, yeah. Sure.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
And I did put the page numbers on itself.
So speaking of Russell, uh, obviously this is a, uh, aerial view of the site. I don't know if some of you have seen it, some of you haven't. It's one of my favorite pictures. It's around 1985 and, you know, those of us that were in high school or grade school and older than that at the time, remember, uh, how bad it was. And it really, you know, I just want to show you just as the basis for why we're really here. And some, I really hope to show this picture as a before and a gorgeous project next to it as an after. And so, uh, flip through. So I just want to talk about a little background and then I'll get you to these guys to who we moved for. Let it be respectful. As you know, we went through many approvals over the years on this project. Once we felt comfortable with the approvals, we moved forward and we cleaned up environmental issues on the site. We disposed of over 90,000 tons of contaminants oil on this thing and moved it to approve site. In 2015, it was the largest brownfield cleanup in New York State. We're kind of proud that we cleaned it up. We did it not only for us, but it's, uh, and also for the village at the time. And so, um, it cost us $6 million and, uh, it's part of the project. So, uh, as I said, obviously, we've, we've been at this for a while. Where we are today is not just a blank sheet of white paper. We're not starting from a blank sheet of paper. We really have some things under our belt that are still substantial. Uh, as, as you know, uh, we, at the second year we were into this, we created an archive zone with the village specifically for this site that provided for high density residential. A lot went in after that and we received a special use permit. Along with special use permit, uh, was a regulating plan, which was a plan that was designed by many people involved, many consultants, and it showed heights of buildings, site plan, and the fans set up the stage for what the trustees at the time wanted to see. And that plan, uh, is really still valid. It can't be ignored in this process going forward. There, there is a basis for where we were. Again, I won't go through the detail, but, um, when we originally started, we started with the project at about 220 minutes. And through a series of approvals and literally hundreds of meetings, uh, our last application had 167 minutes. So what we're going to present to you tonight is the current plan is significantly smaller than where we were before. Okay? However, including in that, we're still willing to provide some of the amenities that we discussed before, which is our, uh, public dockage along the canal, uh, traffic economy in the median on Monroe Avenue to help not only our project, but the village as a whole entering the village, slowing traffic. Uh, there's an extensive amount of work we need to do under the water main on Sutherland Street, uh, which is currently, uh, under, undersized and, and not, uh, doesn't meet today's standards. And so we're still willing to do a lot of these amenities as part of our presentation. Okay. So the site, now I just want to describe the site and the, uh, what goes with it so that as we build the plan, uh, we understand the parameters that go with it. Obviously, it's a long narrow site. It's about 7.4 acres, uh, railroad on one side, canal on the other, as we all know, and one point of entry. That has a lot of issues that go along with it. Whatever we build there is going to be kind of long and narrow to match the size. You can say on this, um, there are some goals that we try to achieve when, when developing this. Uh, one is to minimize surface parking. We've heard that over the years. We think it's important. We, we want to minimize and we think we'll get more value if we have underground parking. We're going to show you that. Want to maximize green space. It's always, it's always been something we've been striving for. Uh, and then there are constraints, fire rescue, uh, building code constraints, circulation of cars. And then we need to get the right unit mix of one bedrooms and two bedrooms and high-end units to meet the market that, that we think we need to meet. All of that is just before we get started. And at the end of it all, it needs to be financially feasible so that it works for us and, and it works for us and it'll work for the village. So let's go through one more thing. Yeah, that's what I just...
Thank you. Next slide, enter this.
Oh, one more. Thank you.
Okay. So, uh, again, in February, we received a letter from the village. It's my assumption that the letter, uh, was a condemnation letter from the trustees and from the other two boards, which we might understand. Everyone had a little bit of input into it. And they were potential guidelines on how to move forward. That was very helpful. And so it was at that time where I called CJS and I said, hey, guys, we had an opportunity. Here's the criteria, design the project that works within this criteria. And they came back and had some ideas and we modified it a few times and we're going to present this stuff. It really works. And then it meets, uh, the intent of these criterias very well. I'm going to steal the thunder a little bit and tell you what I'm going to tell you and then I can tell. Okay? Back to the regulating plan that I just discussed a minute ago. And as a comparison for our new proposal to the regulating plan, this new proposal has less height, has less building footprint, fewer building stories, less building width, less onsite parking, more landscaping, less building length. And then overall, and I don't know who's online watching, but, um, I hope Bill McBride is because the biggest item that he had with the project was the mass of building. And our new project, as compared to the regulating plan, is 35% less mass than the regulating plan. It's a big number conceptually. And I'm going to tell you how we did that. It's not a small feat to do that, but the project that we're going to propose, I'm very excited about, uh, and, uh, we're going to put our back behind it and really build something gorgeous for, for the village. So I'm going to leave it to these guys to detail how we got to where we are. Do you want to say on this?
Yeah. Thank you, Chris. So, um, on this page that is still also, um, on the web, so it just kind of outlines what, what the letter kind of gave us as a parameter, really, um, the cubic volume of 1.85 million, uh, cubic feet of living space. So that was kind of a big number we kind of trying to get our head around. And as Chris said, um, we achieved effectively 35% less than the buildings before. The building footprint in the letter was limited to 16 and a half percent of the whole site. And, um, three story, uh, maximum height, which we met, none of our early time talk of them stories, uh, we all agreed to that. Maximum length in the latter also stated that each building should be 175 feet, no longer. And I'll walk you through, um, those challenges. And then the width or depth of the building was allowed to 67. And as Chris mentioned, we actually, our majority of the building is 62 feet and we are going to 65, 67 feet in some areas to push and pull a little bit, create some interest in the building. So you don't have this one long monolithic building along the canal. Minimizing the parking because our unit count is down and the parking is less. And, uh, with the final design that Craig will walk you through, then also will be, most of the parking is actually under the building. We have an opportunity to do that. And then some of the items were a little bit misaligned to all these great goals, but some of them, if you do one thing, the other guideline could be missed. So we're just going through and dissecting the letter a little bit. So then, oh, sorry.
Can you see that?
So then we started and so this is a 75 foot building and this is a 100 foot by building. So we just started laying it out in 67 feet deep and it's like, okay, what kind of units can you get in there and how high? And then we just put them in a row along that long narrow side. And, um, so what developed and we really found that some of the, we really came up with, we needed 11 individual buildings because as you can see, surface underground parking was really hard to achieve to also get the unit count. We have a little bit of underground parking, but the rest really had to be surface parking. Um, and to get into all these individual buildings, a lot of asphalt roads to get in the building. So we felt like we had a lot of, um, surface area that was more asphalt than, than grass, which we all felt probably wasn't the right thing for a walkable neighborhood that we would like to achieve here. And, um, and also individual buildings, uh, the HVAC systems and other mechanic systems and building systems like elevators really aren't, um, efficient and also therefore not very sustainable if there are all these individual units just, um, for building, uh, running. And then the building sauce, because we had to get a certain unit count and density we wanted because over next to each other and you needed to get, get the amount of the parking thing, we really wouldn't get it close to Monroe Avenue. And I think in the regulating plan, there was actually a building right by Monroe Avenue that actually now, you know, proposed that I could walk you through. We don't need that site anymore. So actually we can add more green buffer along Monroe Avenue before the housing really started. So right at the bridge, we do not need, um, a large volume sitting there. It can actually be more of a car like setting that you would be entering, uh, into the site. So, so after the second slide, we really, um, recognized that the regulating plan had four floors. We don't need a fourth floor. We, we agree that bring the volume down, um, works just fine. So we really have a two or three story building. We also studied, uh, gables versus flat roofs. And the gables on a 67 foot deep building, um, added so much volume and visual, uh, surfaces of asphalt chingles that really didn't benefit the whole development and I think also the views.
So just to clear, so we changed the roof from gable roof to flab roof. And that is a huge mass.
And then we also, um, we thought, okay, having them spread apart, even so, the, uh, right, uh, the letter was hoping that these individual buildings, we were starting to look at, what would it be if we connect some of these buildings and maybe change the length of the building with different materials? So we have a 100 foot of one thing, maybe 50 feet of another material, just like here on Main Street, right, where, um, all of, all these buildings are connected. There was still a little narrow five foot pass-throughs, I think, one or two. But the rest is a 300 foot long almost building, but they all have different textures and, and looks. So we thought that was actually getting us more in, um, in a better direction. And then we significantly, significantly reduced the number of units and as I said, moved the buildings away from Monroe Avenue. Yeah. With the flat roofs and the two and one story, uh, that two and three story that we have, uh, throughout the development really pitched us and also the flat roof and the materials and really played out some things. And then we also added balcony porches to get yet another layer of, um, penetration and, and interest to those long buildings. So here kind of, uh, that was just kind of a part of the, uh, laying it out and putting it next to each other, um, with all these little narrow entryways that you would have to have. And I think was, uh, the site civil engineer that also said, you fired me behind here. He's already telling us that it needs to get stretched out even more so cars need to turn in there. So here's now looking at it, what would it mean if we're getting them together? We still have a continuous parking area and Craig will walk you through that below, but the building still can have a little view shed or even a set of stairs here at the end where you could walk through from the parking and, um, up on the railroad side down to the canal. So there will still will be pass-throughs, but doing it like this will turn the unit much more efficient with elevator services and...
So it's more like an alley?
Yes. So this, yeah. So here would be, here would be a few alleys. Here, now we have enough room to have larger green space in the middle, uh, for, for some amenities spaces that we have. And here we move around with the traffic and that's at the very end. So with that, I will hand it...
I'll start, I'll start.
Oh, you're sorry.
I'll, I'll, I'll overlap a little bit on that one and I'll keep going. So, um, maybe a little, uh... So, you know, staying with this, maybe for a minute, the bottom image, I think, you know, you can see, oh, I gotta look at, um, sorry. You know, we're pushing most of the three story pieces to the rear of the site and then concentrating the, the two story portions on the far side. So we create a lot of variety and texture across the canal side. And then the, the railroad side, that's kind of the backdrop to the canal side. So it gives additional kind of layer and kind of texturing of the, of the project. And as Derek was mentioning, you know, it's like on Main Street, even the building might be longer, we can create all these different identities for the building as you move along the building. So it's kind of a continuous changing, uh, group of, of buildings, even though they're attached to one another, they're, they're performing as one building, but they might have the identity separate of buildings. And, you know, we think this is a lot more successful than having, well, we said in the letter, individual buildings that are classified as a certain length. So, I mean, depends on how you define the idea of a building. Is, is this a building because it's building by building code? Or is this building because you recognize it as, oh, this, that looks like a building and then there's something authentic that looks like a good building? So we just think this is going to be a much more successful kind of canal for a ditch. With that, I'm going to go, oh, that's, that's all right. So from there, you know, we start developing more in detail. You can see with this next image, you know, this is essentially a site, I don't know the same thing you were looking at in the diagram, where you see these buildings on the site.
Is it after this?
It is. It should be...
Oh, there's a little...
The muscle dropped ahead.
So this was, this was the last one we were talking about.
We should be on page 13.
Mm-hmm. So that was 12. And this is 13? Uh, the Q and A?
There should be, no, there should be 21 pages.
Oh, I see 20.
Go to the next one.
Go to the next one?
Yeah, that's the one.
Yeah, that's the one. They just had a slide in the wrong order.
Well, actually, no, keep going, one more.
Actually, this slide, if we have the PowerPoint and another PDF, it's actually moving.
Ah, yes. It caught, okay.
Okay, yes. I did it slightly, but then we said, we do bring out, it's like, oh, now all this work is done. So now we're inside.
Yes.
So, it's hard copy, now we're looking at the file, the image of the idea here. So you can see, you know, with this, a little further development of the same diagram we're talking about a minute ago, and the amount of green space that we're able to preserve on the site. And as Dirk had mentioned, with the underground parking, there will be limited parking on site. Most will be unused buildings, which is practical now because the buildings are linked together. We can create a single entrance for a larger group of buildings that, you know, allow for the parking to essentially run continuously. Even though the buildings look as though they are a shopping store. And then, as was mentioned, you know, some are turned a little bit sideways. We can have entrances on both sides, right, where you can activate, you know, both sides of the building with, you know, entrances and porches. It won't be all internal corridors, you know, that are just, you know, kind of dead to the street. Yeah, exactly. So we've done some buildings now elsewhere where you might even have a corridor on the upper floor, but the lower floor has individual entrances for all the different units on that floor, right? So you have a kind of hybrid of individual entrances on one floor with corridors on the other floors to give you the kind of vastness of all fours elevator access for all the building units, but on gray street entrances for activity units. And even though the buildings, you know, would potentially repeat in terms of their footprint, we can vary the architectural style. So, you know, building A over here, which might be over here, would not necessarily look the same, but the configuration might be the same. Any questions on that? I'll go to the next. So again, I've had to rehash some of these things, but as was stated, you know, we're down 35% from the volume that we had the regulating plan or that Chris had the regulating plan. So now it's 1.2.
Actually, that's, that's what it jumped down. Yes, it's 1.8, 1.8 million now. No, it's 1.8 million now. It's a, yes, it's a reduction of.
There goes the numbers, I'll trust it with that. And part of that is, as we talked about, with the large roofs coming off, we lose a huge amount of volume there. But we also lose volume with the number of buildings that have been reduced, the overall footprint has been reduced. So there's also, there's a reduction in any of their ways.
Excuse me one second. On the page officials, when you're done, can we pass this down to the group, the room attending? Just so I can see, people sitting around, I don't know if you really see. So, so you've done.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So in addition to the, the volume reduction, which I think really, you know, is what you're going to see from a distance, then we also have these decreases in the building length and the building height, which, you know, is going to perceive both as a pedestrian walk-in. Kind of how I think that will be a real, you know, experiential as I, as well as just, just the overall pedestrian development. And then the 15% decrease in the, in the building footprint. So that allows for more green space because we lost apartment on site and this is for green spaces as a result of that. Maybe if you want to read it, right? Okay, and so, you know, obviously this, like talking about 25, you know, we would look for our problems to make this very sustainable project, both in terms of the walkability that it would have for the neighborhood and for the village, which is a really sustainable idea, just to make this part of a traditional village neighborhood as opposed to just putting it out in some green field that, you know, kind of like say, you know, wild. So in addition to the walkability, you know, there's the opportunity for solar. There's, as Chris mentioned, the underground stormwater and retention of stormwater. Then the flat roof, there's a lot of opportunities for planting roof decks, you know, green, that type of thing, which we think would be really great. And then we're interested in native planning. So I know, you know, Tom, Village Wizard has been working on those types of things. And this is not thinking of that, obviously. Rain gardens and rain harvesting from the actual, it was like this site. And then participation in the village algorithm, I don't fully understand that yet, but I think.
Well, my point there was, you know, the algorithm is really so close to this.
Right.
Maybe there's an opportunity that once it's built, we can form a group to help maintain it or some, or fund it or end up listening to conversations. So.
Yeah, we were having a participatory partner.
That's nice. Thank you. Okay.
And then we'd be obviously trying to build canopy, you know, street trees or canopy on this site, just like elsewhere in the village. Just either kind of thing that a site that doesn't really benefit from. And then things like charge stations for electric vehicles and maybe like sustainable practices that are becoming more sustainable now. I think, you know, the next, actually, I think is something we're really still working on, but it's about the, the, the identity of the project and what is the appropriate identity for a project like this? Even though it's part of the village, it's not part of the residential component of the village right now. It's more part of the kind of canal identity that the village has, which is a little bit more of this kind of industrial vernacular. It's like a historic industrial vernacular. It's not like a style, like a revival style. You don't think of, of the buildings along the canal as being classical or reclassical or derisive or something like that. And we're thinking that this development would be better served to be part of that, part of that. Modern materials and modern construction can do it better than we can in trying to replicate the kind of historic character that's in the neighborhoods of, of the village.
And so it's time.
Yeah, I think it's, it's always time, it speaks to both its time, but it also speaks to canal heritage. It speaks to mature, that are contemporary and that are, I think, long lasting and weather well. You know, so if we use things, you know, like some metal siding, some spent panel, some wood, you know, some masonry, some even rusted or it's called core pen steel, that kind of weathering steel, along with, you know, some galvanized products or, or other kinds of just, in terms of age, it will give us kind of an advantage that, that if we were trying to, I don't think we can compete with the historical character of the village. And I think we're not trying to do that in terms of the styles that are here. So this would be, unfortunately, that would be respectful and still contemporary, which we kind of favor. We've done this on other developments and I think it's been successful. When you go to a place like Royal Place in downtown Rochester, the new buildings are that size. It's getting consistent with the old buildings, but they fit in because the materials are really compatible and works as a, as a composition. So that's our kind of material palette. And I think we've scaled them to, you know, refining this and talking about this, but it's not shutters and, and, you know, tees and that, those sort of gate polyps and things like that. That's not. So this is, again, you know, this is a two dimensional depiction of the 3D diagram that Dirk showed earlier. This kind of shows you more clearly how we can link the parking together underneath a group of buildings. So we get a really efficient parking layout within the depth of these buildings. And then the building's set on top and Dirk was talking about like potential little pass-through between these other buildings that would actually go on top of the park. The park is in the ground, essentially, right? It's like, um, kind of like, it's a basement. It's like a elevated basement, right? So it's part of the grounds a little bit, which is actually good because it gets your first floor up off the ground a little bit. Just like a, you know, your first floor in the village, you know, your porch is right at the ring, right? Your porch is up a little bit. So you're sitting down and you feel a little more comfortable that you walk in the sidewalk and putting down. So we want our first block to be just a little bit, and this parking road grade, kind of giving us, give us, give us full, full. And always a precision of maybe get a little bit more appropriate for pedestrian experience.
But just when I had it, and so it's not two buildings next to each other, like Craig said. Right, this is supposed to be sitting on top, creating an alley in between.
Exactly right. So this is the lowest floor. He's sitting on the top, all of it. And this shows those kind of seven buildings that we were proposing as opposed to the 11 that would have been driven by the letter that was talked about earlier. If you look at the lot coverage and the building sizes in the letter, the result in, if you take that lot coverage and the building size, you get a lot of, you know, and so we're saying, well, that's a probably, we're going to be rather consolidate, get more green space, push it together, make more efficient parking, get parking on the site. And then still break up area from the front to locate it, it would maybe vary, right? So you're not off by a 200 foot long, continuing piece, not a great, you know. But with that, then, you know, I think this, I think this may be the last, the last image. This is really meant as a, as an initial kind of point of departure for our discussion about this. Like, we're not saying that this is what we're going to build. But if you don't do some sort of rendering at this point, it may be even hard for us to have a conversation about, or what we're talking about, the same thing that you're originally, you have to take. So I think, you know, we understand that there's a lot more to it than just going to say, okay, we think we're done. Because we wouldn't be comfortable saying that even if we agreed with this, we, we still think there's a lot of work to figure. But I think it still gives the idea of, you know, the three story and the two story, the possibility of roof terraces, the possibility of porches and the possibility of alleys, those types of things. The idea that when you walk on the canal, you have some two story, some three story, and there's a variety of materials as you walk along. And the scale is much, much smaller. I mean, when you take a gable roof over 67 feet, that's a really large roof. And even if you just bring it over a portion, like let's say we're going to gable over the back half, that's just one quarter of the volume, right? Because you take this length, you cut it in half, the area is cut by, by four, right? So you can, you can do more roof shapes on a building that's broken down like this with a lot of this volume. If you have these individual identities for different pieces.
And here's what I was saying, so this is really the building at 62 feet. And then in the latter, it's at up to 67. So we're, some of these areas, we are now taking by 5 feet and doing that pushing pull. And here to not get as to 67 feet that was in the latter. But really, the majority of the building mass is only in the 62 feet because it's what we need for the parking. And we're able to do efficient layouts of units and stuff like that.
And then if you could just, you know, something other than a straight shot along the canal, so you get a little bit of this push and pull. Yeah, I think you could probably do well with flat, I think just a few feet will make a difference. It will help us. So that's essentially where we are at this point. And maybe he's saying, okay, we don't want to go obviously too far without having this conversation. So I think Chris got to this point and said, okay, we're on the same page. Let's see if we can get on the same page with the village before we advance any further.
Yeah, we're good. So, you know, that's our, our, the glory of our presentation. Do you have any questions, going back to the end of these slides or where we are or how we got to where we are?
I think you're very thorough and very thoughtful. And I think you've listened.
And yeah, and I agree. Thank, thank you for saying that. Which of these, this is the letter, in the terms of the letter. Which of these were you not able to stay within the guidelines of, or were you able to stay within the guidelines of all of it? And if, if so, if you had to concede or change, why?
So the building footprint, even to the 11 buildings to get to the right count, the 16 and a half percent, we did it a study, but the unit count was so low, which just financially wasn't useful. So this one, we're at 21 right now. And the original was higher. So, so we're higher here. We're meeting the maximum story height and we think we're even matched better because we also have straggle roofs. And we're doing three stories and we have flat roofs, so we have less mass. We're meeting the 67 and are below for the majority of the building at 62 feet. We minimize, we minimize the parking and therefore that's what we're doing to the regular, regular line plan. The building footprint also is already in the landscape. And as, as you can see, as Craig was saying, the parking at the water side, the canal side is a little bit higher. So it helps us to kind of put these buildings on more of a green plan instead of just sidewalk and nothing. So I think we can get it in the plantings right in here. So these were kind of the major things that. Yeah, yeah, the first one. Yeah, so. Well, we're right at 1.85.
Oh, right at the number.
Yeah, we're right at the number. So that was one of our biggest volume guidelines that we really wanted to meet and were working really hard on. What can we do and what ceiling had it meets the apartments? So we can reduce the height even more and look in the volume. So I think you're right to the point. So yeah, so I think the.
Can we just?
Okay, thank you.
And so this parking here, the foundation of the building, is for who? This is conceptual.
And the parking will be for residents, tenants, public to access the dockage along the canal.
Because there's also the view shed looking across the canal, you've seen parked cars. So you may want to take that into consideration.
Yeah, well, the parking would be street parking, parallel parking, not really parking lots, if you will. It would all get along with the corridors.
The drive.
Yeah.
Yes. It's like growing already.
So it's not actually because the, the units on the gravel side, that would want to be the last preferred side. On the third floor, they will have a face that would open to the canal and roof deck, right? So the last preferred side, wanting the walkover side on the top floor because all of a sudden, now we have a new deck, it's down with a roof deck and a purple on top that the people on the canal side wouldn't necessarily have. So even the back side becomes actually positive, you can use the top. So pushing more of the three stories to the back makes that third floor actually better for everybody.
And then the two story components, as it goes down the side, they designed on the canal side. So from looking in front of the canal, you see more two stories. From the railroad tracks, you might see more three stories.
For sure. Yeah. But I think, you know, we think that's appropriate because that's, you know, where they have to be building. That's what we would.
It's essentially sort of stuff, yeah. Any other questions?
I did just, I was going to leave the slides and sort of, just in, in terms of the process. And first, I want to thank you very much for all the quality you put into this. And it's clearly a lot of work on these designs. I really appreciate it. I was wondering, in terms of the decision-making authority in this project right now, and also that appears to be associated to rest with the historic preservation board and the planning and zoning board appeals. So I was wondering if you had plans on when and how you'd present the information to those two boards?
Very good question. Nice to meet you personally. And I had the same question.
Okay.
Back, back to this board and the other boards. My intent is to come up with a design that the boards are fairly comfortable with. And then what I would like to do is have a settlement on a lawsuit. And in that settlement, we would agree on plan and a settlement at the same time. That's really the easiest way to do this.
It's important to remember that the settlement would be with each of the three boards that's currently in litigation. This board, this board has the exact same decision-making authority as the HPP. And each board has a lawsuit which is involved.
So, at this, my understanding that the mayor invited the other boards to this meeting. I'm extremely disappointed that no one else showed.
If I could just interject briefly.
Sure.
I think, I think the other boards are keenly interested in this project. And they made, they made it clear through the memorandums that were sent along to you folks. They wanted to see sets of plans, so they would be able to then, back and back, we really asked as much detail. So, so I don't think, I don't think that they see people in the 21 and 22, I think that they have strong, strong, you know, sets of plans. And they are independent boards. So that was a request that, okay, that's okay.
Our, our difficulty there is we're not really about the plans, the energy, the kind of work that's out of those days. So it's for us more of a concept. And that's something that's easy to, I don't, we're not really about our plan strategy. It's more of a teaching of the idea, right? Which, you know, maybe they all understand that and realize that we're just not there.
And I think it would be great if we could just have an informational meeting and just like we did here, to hear their feedback because we cannot fill out all this paperwork because we don't have all the information yet with all the details that they. But we would like to bring everyone up together so we know, and Chris doesn't invest in us. And we don't invest our time to something that if you're later, it's finally drawn and some says, why are we doing this? So I think we want this to be more of a blacklist.
Right. We even discussed all the material count as an example, or the style of building control. We can discuss a lot of material count, as an example, or the style of buildings, right? These are conversations, we can have about drawings, anything, and if we're not on the same page, then better than no bet, before, you know, we have something out there, this, we think is really.
I think, I think you gave, you know, all good points, and I think that our words, we should, so I think it's really more, um, making those messages perfectly with those boards.
So that's my last slide, really, and, and my question is, you know, what, what is, what would be the process going forward? I could make a suggestion, but we would make a move, say, well, with timelines, or things that we would provide, I'm gonna say to the village, and, and we will all three boards, and that the boards would have a certain period of time to respond back to us, and we would have a process with times and deadlines to move forward towards a settlement. If you can't do a settlement, you know, there are a lot of the groups that I can do. So is that any questions, little adjustments, or? Any other questions on the plans, or? Another slide.
A, a restaurant, the entire versions that had a restaurant, is that included in this?
Yeah, um, the building that's in front, we could go back to, a couple of that overlay. I want to.
These, these two that are kind of, uh, okay, they're not.
One side, nine, nine and ten. Go back.
Yeah.
Can we go back, like seventeen years, or something?
No, no, no.
Eight, nine, twenty.
All right.
That's right.
It's gonna change.
Yes.
It does.
I think you're, you know, yeah. It'll be, sorry, you know, see if I, there you go.
Okay, so, as you remember, our, our last plans, uh, had a building up in front, you know, on the, which is where we planned to have a restaurant and residential units above it, uh, and our, although this isn't perfectly accurate, you can see that that building's eliminated. And so, um, the restaurant is gone from the site. Now, my intent, because we have a special permit for a restaurant, is not to, um, do away with it yet. What we provided for some space in this middle area, that could potentially be a restaurant in the center of the site, and as, working with the boards, if that is amenable, that would be my intent. Uh, it would take any traffic or view away from parking and stuff, into the middle of the site, away from the view, uh, but in my opinion, from my personal experience, a mixed-use project is much more viable than just straight residential. If you have a component that has a restaurant, and you can go stop for dinner and walk upstairs, it, it makes the, the whole community somewhat more viable, and so I'm not ready to say no on that. I have provisions for it, if, as a group, we can agree to do it.
Yeah, and the other provisions, we just, it's colored and it's all the way in this space, so depending on what we are, we're getting.
And that, that amount of space could be a fitness center, it could be, you know, something, or that.
It could be.
This is a man in the world.
No, 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 that, that, those, those were just, I think, I think, it's really along here and along.
I think it's all around this center of the development with, well, like, like Chris said, managed cases potentially, you know, for, for, for.
And then you would have walkways, national coming back onto the street.
Yes. It's shown in the renderings, probably haven't lied if I had the site plan yet, because we really wanted to see first of all the messing and everything else, if we're, if this is heading in the right direction with a cubic feet and, and everything else, I think if, if we feel like we're heading in the right direction, gather the village, and hopefully, soon with other boards, then I think we'll start developing these other details and handles with everyone.
Any, any other questions? I would, I would strongly urge you to reach out directly to the other two boards, um, you know, I think this is, this has been really very interesting, and I so appreciate you really taking the time to explain this in tremendous detail. As I said, we do not have control over the other boards, I know that they, both boards, uh, certainly want to proceed in some fashion, so I'm sure you'll be able to look that up.
Right. In terms of what we presented, in terms of the, you know, building size and, and configuration, what's your feelings on that?
Oh, I think you're quite in the right direction, absolutely. Um, you know, one thing that's interesting, and I will pass this around back to the board into, into the room again, if you do take a look, for example, at the office part, with, um, the significant roof, uh, roof lines relative to this, um, I think you can see quite a difference in the variation, and so I think, I think that's meaningful. And also, obviously, the, the, it's an office park, so they have different types of parking, so, you know. Yeah, okay. It's a different, so, yeah, but I think it's helpful for people to see that, I mean, you're speaking so specifically about no gables, altering those roof lines, and what that impact is. Um, I think just even have people taking a look, because we all know the office part is, so I, you know, I think this is a helpful reference. You know, you know, I say thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys, yeah.
Very helpful.
Thank you very much, so.
Thank you.
Before, before you go, please, um, for everyone here, that there's other meetings on the schedule, and, um, we wanna go.
One more.
Okay, wanna talk about a meeting?
One more, yeah.
No, one, yeah.
There was a meeting that said, um, fifteen.
Yes, right now, currently, we are scheduled for a public meeting on July fifteenth, we are hoping to have that as well on Zoom. Um, we'll be allowed to, to have and answer questions. Uh, we're working on a site for that meeting, because we do anticipate it will be meeting our capacity with the rest, so we're hoping to have that information locked down this week or next week, because the holidays, wait that answer. Soon as we have it available, we'll be posted on our website and on Facebook and wherever we can get it up.
Yeah, um, you know, maybe that meeting can be in concert with one of, of, of the other two boards.
So I'll replace that, you know, that'd be something for you all to.
Yeah, I'm happy to, and hopefully, some of the public was listening online to this, but, um, you know, again, I'd love to take this conversation into the process, so I'm not too many my wheels, and so the time doesn't just go on, you know, I don't.
I, I think this board understands that, and I certainly do, and I'm excited to see what's going forward, and I'm glad.
You very much so.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
I have one additional copy, so I'm going to do my hard copy, I just didn't want to be, people doing this.
Specialize, you know, that's great, that's.
Right.
Real quick, so you know, it's beyond my control, we have to post our videos live, so this will be with this images in there, on our website, just so you know where.
Actually, I think that's all, because more people will have an understanding of it.
So actually, can I ask, um, I had a PDF as well, because that is, uh, oh, some of the photographs are copyrighted, so can I give you a PDF, would that be better for you to post, I would rather have you post the PDFs?
Yes, we, uh, would be.
Yeah, but, well, we also have to put this up because of the conversation, it's a.
Video.
Oh, oh, okay, oh, no, it's, okay, the podcast, I'm gonna, I gotta.
Well, the hard part is to play during video.
Oh, oh, because, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but, but that was, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, just whatever.
Then, 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 that's fine.
Okay.
That's fine.
I'm just being open to you.
No, thank you.
The whole thing is, as well, and I'm gonna say, this is gonna be a foil every season, tomorrow morning at eight AM. Or tonight.
That's something, yeah.
Thank you.
And we're looking to motion close to me.
I'll make a motion to end the meeting.
Roll call, trustee Scottser.
All right.
Trustee eating.
Eating eye.
Trustee Liken.
Something on.
Mayor Palmer.
All right, eating.
Thank you.